Thank you, Matthew. Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Nice to be with you. I have a slide presentation that I'll share if you get that up. And I will be taking off my, my mask for the purposes of clarity for the public. I'll be offering an update on COVID-19 as well as monkeypox today. Starting with an overview of our current situation in terms of the numbers. And then get into some of the key strategies in both of those immunizable disease threats that we're facing as a community. When, when the slides come up, you'll see that we have, right now, we are in the longest prolonged period of, of high transmission rates as a county since the start of the pandemic. We've had approximately eighty to a hundred new cases per day now, at least since over, over, over two months. In previous, if you look at our epidemic curve, you'll see that there's a rapid rise and a fall in these very discernible waves. We're now in sort of a high plateau period. That is now being fueled by the BA5 variant of Omicron. As of two weeks ago, that is now the dominant variant in Marin County, making up right now probably ninety to a hundred percent of the cases. Because two weeks ago, it was about eighty-five percent of all cases. And I'll just continue to, there we go. Have a next slide, please. So these are the, I'll start with the sort of the take homes and then offer more information in each of these that we're seeing, as I said, sustained high rates of transmission. BA5 is the variant that is dominant. Our hospitalization rates remain stable. Our vaccines remain protective. Masks are recommended indoors and we're monitoring the situation closely. Next slide, please. So this is the epidemic curve I was referring to, and you can see while there's a sort of a gradual decline in cases, it is still a high level of transmission for over, over two month period. Next slide, please. What's important about looking at case rates now is that we recognize that we are increasingly under reporting cases. And the way we know that is by looking at our wastewater. And the solid blue line shows the average of our wastewater concentrations of the virus across our four different areas where collecting wastewater for looking at virus levels in Marin County. And it shows that our rates are very similar now to where they were at that pipe, the peak of the Omicron one surge. So we're looking back to January. Remembering such high case rates we had there. We're seeing similar amounts of virus in our wastewater, although we're only seeing about one third the number of cases now as we had then. Which is a sign that with increased home testing and less, and less reporting of, of positive results. Despite the fact that we are still seeing high rates of, of case rates, it's actually an under, under reporting, which is both bad news and good news. Obviously, it reduces our window and our, and our access to the information and our surveillance capacity when we see under reporting. But what that actually means is if you think about it, if our, if our hospitalization rates are stable and we're actually seeing fewer, less reporting, it means that the risk of anyone who's being infected to be hospitalized is actually decreasing over time. Next slide, please. This is our ongoing surveillance for variants. And you can see here on the far right, those orange and the red represent BA4 and BA5. And they make up ninety percent of our, of our variants in Marin County now. And this is typical of what's happening around the region and in fact, the nation. Next slide, please. And these are our hospitalization rates. You can see we have separated out in the light blue versus dark blue, the number of people who are in the hospital for COVID-19. That is, they've been admitted because they are sick with COVID-19 infection versus those that are in the hospital and have incidentally been detected, you know, to have COVID-19, someone who comes in with a broken leg or it's time to deliver their baby. And because everyone who's, who's hospitalized gets tested, we find some fraction of those individuals, because the rate of transmission is so high in the community. Lo and behold, that, you know, they are infected with COVID-19, but it's not contributing to any serious illness for them. And that's an important distinction for us ongoing. Next slide, please. And this is just another way of capturing how our hospitalization rates have been relatively stable at around ten people for COVID-19 in the hospital in Marin County for about two months. So we really haven't seen an appreciable change in the risk of hospitalizations. Coinciding with that also highly, high rate of, of community prevalence. Next slide, please. And then this, you know, we look at cases, we look at hospitalizations and deaths. And this is looking at our deaths. And what you see here is over the, since the beginning of the pandemic, about two hundred and fifty-six deaths in Marin County residents. Seventy percent of those deaths occurred prior to the wide availability of vaccines. So that's on the far left there. You can see those first two waves coincided with kind of the pre-vaccine waves of COVID. And then on the right, you see post vaccination. And we've, we're seeing about one death now per week. And that coincides again with high rates of, of, of transmission. But it's much lower mortality rate than we were seeing earlier in the pandemic. Again, seventy percent of our deaths occurred within that first year of our pandemic experience. And now we're two and a half years in. Next slide, please. So just looking back of 2020 versus 2022, when, when President Biden was, was diagnosed with COVID-19. And now the, the assessment that he's well and he's going to be okay. It reminded me of to sort of look back to, to remember what our experience was in 2020. The odds of dying of COVID-19 in a Marin County resident above age sixty-five in 2020 was one in ten. If you're above age seventy-five, present seventy-nine, if you're above age seventy-five, your odds of dying of COVID-19 in Marin County in 2020 was one in seven. Fifteen percent of our residents above age seventy-five who were infected in 2020 died. Which is one of the reasons why I think we all carry a, a form of trauma, actually, from that, from that experience as a community where so many of our residents were, were passing. And the consequences of, of being infected when you were an older resident in particular were so much more severe. Now in 2022, less than one out of one hundred individuals above age sixty-five when they're infected are, are passing from COVID-19. Next slide, please. So why has case severity and mortality, mortality decreased? The first is immunity from vaccination. The second is immunity from surviving past infection. Both of those forms of immunity are very important in terms of protecting us. The third is treatments. We have earlier detection with home testing, so people are able to get diagnosed earlier on the concept of their own lives without having to wait to go into a healthcare provider to get the PCR test. And then they're able to get access to better both outpatient and inpatient therapies. So the, the ability to take care of people who are very sick in the hospitals have improved. We also have now Paxlovid and more outpatient therapy. And then there's less, less variants. So the strains themselves have changed, there's changes in the virus, there's also changes in the human population. Next slide, please. And this is one of, I think, the most stark illustrations of the benefit of vaccinations. These are case rates that were happening in our long-term care facilities. About sixty-five percent of deaths in Marin County have been among residents of long-term care facilities since the start of the pandemic. So this was obvious, a, a key strategy for us when the vaccines first arrived was to get out into those facilities and vaccinate residents. This is going back to December of 2020, when the first vaccines arrived. We went and did offered first doses, then we were able to go to do second doses. That's really when the immunologic benefit kicks in. And you can see a very dramatic decrease in case rates in our long-term care facilities. And that really was the primary contributor to that dramatic reduction in mortality in Marin. With it has been sustained. Next slide, please. So second boosters, this is an important priority moving forward. As I said, this is one of the key strategies that is going to get us through the rest of the summer with BA5 is making sure that everyone who's above age fifty and is eligible goes ahead and get that second booster. We've added this to our dashboard. That orange bar there is, is the number of Marin County residents who have received now their second booster dose. It's almost sixty thousand. And those are people largely age fifty or above. About forty-five percent of our residents aged fifty to sixty-five have received the second boosters. And sixty-five percent of our residents aged sixty-five and over have received their second booster. And we want to do better than that. Next slide, please. So boost, second boosters are recommended for all residents above age fifty. We have had no deaths among any residents who have received that second booster. It is highly protective, both against infection, but actually more importantly, against severe illness and death in the short term. So the immunity from that, we know BA5 is much better at evading the immune system. However, when you get the vaccine, you're, you're well protected for sixty to ninety days easily with that, with that second booster dose. You don't need to wait till the fall vaccine. In fact, we were recommending people who are age fifty or older not wait for that fall vaccine. While we are anticipating a better vaccine in the fall that might be better matched to Omicron. One of the questions we frequently get is should I just wait in that case? And the recommendation has shifted to, to no because of the increased infectivity and immunovasiveness of BA5. Next slide, please. Shifting to pediatric vaccines, as you know, our zero to five-year-olds were now, were made eligible for vaccines not too long ago. We have about twenty-four percent, about one in four of our families of children zero to four have chosen the, to get the vaccine. Three of four have chosen to wait. And we are offering a recommendation that people have that conversation with their pediatrician to navigate the choices that they face around pediatric vaccines. For context, I've offered here in the dotted yellow line, the national rates of vaccination within that first month that our pediatric vaccines were about three percent across the nation were vaccinated in Marin County, it's about twenty-four percent. And then comparing that to the five to eleven-year-olds nationally, about eighteen percent of children aged five to eleven were vaccinated within the first month of eligibility in Marin, that was about sixty percent. So, you know, showing just the dramatic increased uptake of vaccines in Marin relative to national averages, which has been one of our, our greatest assets as a county in getting us through this pandemic since the start. Next slide, please. To face covering, you know, there's obviously one of the most divisive and, and politicized elements of a response. I just want to, you know, have a chance to sort of step back and offer the basics, which is that a high-quality mask does protect you from being infected. This is what healthcare workers have been doing for years. You know, as a physician, when I was working in hospitals, you have someone that might be infectious. You put on a mask, you walk into the room, you can have that interaction with them. A high-quality mask that actually prevents you from breathing in the virus will protect you from being infected. It's not complicated. So carry a mask with you and use your judgment. We are not planning to, to impose a mask mandate. We think that at this point in the pandemic, people have learned enough about what their individual risk profile is. We've learned how to read the room. They recognize that when there's large numbers of people gathered together indoors, that there's a risk of transmission. They know how that, that a mask will protect them. And we are strongly recommending that people make that choice to cover their face in indoor public settings to prevent being infected. Just to, to offer information, I sort of see my role now as being just offering the best possible information for people to navigate the choices that are theirs to make, both in vaccines and in masks. And I think one important fact is that with the estimated prevalence right now in the community of about five percent, so one in twenty being infected, you can just do some statistics to say, well, there's ten people in a room. What is the likelihood that at least one person is infected? If there's twenty-five people in the room, what's the likelihood that at least one person is infected? You get up to fifty people in a room together, imagine a grocery store as an example. There's a ninety-two percent likelihood that at least one person in that setting is infected. So the likelihood of exposure is relatively high in Marin because of the high baseline prevalence. That baseline prevalence is estimated based on hospitalization rates and the fact that we're testing every single person that comes into the hospital. So we get an estimate of asymptomatic, asymptomatic carriage. Next slide, please. So here's the upgrade your mask. So we're recommending that people move, you know, the surgical mask is somewhat protective. Those KN95s or KF94 masks or the N95 masks, these are the ones that actually are more form a seal around your mouth. And those are the ones that doctors and nurses use to protect themselves from being infected. They're widely available on the market. Pharmacies, there's a federal program now, you can actually go into a pharmacy and get them for free. We're also distributing those sorts of masks through our community response teams to make sure our low-income residents have access to high-quality masks. Next slide, please. Shifting to monkeypox. Monkeypox is now a global, I would call it a pandemic. I expect that that designation will be rendered relatively soon because it's meets, meets the criteria. It's, it's, it's being, it's, it's all across the world now. It was previously limited to Central Africa. It is an epidemic in, in, in most nations now. It differs from COVID-19 in some, some important ways, just to set the stage. It's mainly transmitted through intimate contacts and skin-to-skin contact. You know, COVID-19 is obviously transmitted through the air. So it is currently overwhelming in overwhelmingly in a subset of our populations, men who have sex with men through skin-to-skin contact, currently mostly sexual contact. Much lower risk of hospitalization or death. And no deaths of any, any people with monkeypox in the United States since the start of, of the epidemic here in the US. There's been, I think, one hospitalization now in the state of California. When people are hospitalized, it's mainly for, for palliation because of the painfulness of the condition. And we are working to, oh, the other, the other difference is that this permanent protection, when you're vaccinated or whether you've been infected, you actually have permanent immunity compared to COVID-19, which we know because the virus evolves so quickly, our immunity is waning over time. We can be reinfected over and over again. Next slide, please. This is the numbers in, in the state of California. There's about twenty-one counties that have had some cases of monkeypox. San Francisco has the highest number of cases, about one hundred and sixty. In Marin there, you can see us with our two cases. We've had two, two known, two confirmed cases of monkeypox in Marin and one suspect case. Next slide, please. So I said to confirm one suspect, actions taken by Marin County Public Health so far is that we've done contact investigation, contact investigations of our known cases to make sure that those that they had contact with are offered that post, what we call post-exposure prophylaxis, which is the form of a vaccine to make sure that they don't get sick. We're also issued public health advisories to our healthcare providers. This is one of the, the challenges that's reminiscent of the early days with COVID, which is these, as a new infectious disease, our healthcare community needs to learn about it so that they can actually look, you know, early diagnosis and treatment. So that's part of our role in public health is to make sure the healthcare system is prepared to respond. We've done education and outreach to our at-risk residents. That is mainly men who have sex with men. So our community-based partners like Spar Center, who really serve that community, have been valuable assets and partners so far. We are distributing vaccine to our healthcare providers. We've gotten a total as a county of one hundred and fifty doses, which is not nearly enough. Obviously, the vaccines are scarce supply and the federal government is working to increase supply and get them out to states, and then states distribute them to local jurisdictions. We are advocating to get more doses. And then we are making sure that our, our residents have access to healthcare and vaccine and treatment. Next slide, please. So what is monkeypox? You know, this is just some other information that we're, we're distributing. It's a viral infection transmitted through, through close contact. As I said, the symptoms are rashes. It's a rash that is, it's, it's pox. So poxes are small red lesions across the skin. Compared to, if you, you know, if you Google monkeypox, you would find kind of the historical presentation of it, which was a full-body rash, often on the face. The current circulating strains are much more limited. The rash seems to be limited to the genitals, penis and perianal area primarily. And that's something that's important for people to be aware of. And, you know, if they're having any, any rash, especially if they're sexually active, to refrain from sexual activity until they have that rash evaluated. People also experience constitutional symptoms, fever, headaches, muscle aches and swollen lymph nodes. Importantly, the symptoms can last for a long time, so up to, up to a month. And anytime during that month period, you can actually transmit the virus to others. So one of the recommendations is that people who have those rashes, you know, get it, get it evaluated. But there may be a period of, of up to a month where limiting sexual contact is an important way to prevent spread. Next slide, please. And, you know, what we're recommending to our community is this is obviously a dynamic environment. I think there's been a lot of concern and fear in the gay community. And we want to make sure that people stay informed, that they maintain contact with their healthcare provider. If there's any concerns or questions or any rash develops. And then again, as if there are, if there is a rash, to take a break and refrain from sexual activity and make sure you're getting the care that you deserve. Next slide, please. So in summary, for COVID-19, we're seeing sustained high rates of transmission fueled by BA5. Boosters and masks are our best tools currently. With monkeypox, it's a new infectious disease threat. We're supporting at-risk communities through prevention, vaccination and treatment. And we're monitoring the situation closely. And we'll be getting vaccines out as soon as we get more available. We'll be hosting vaccination events with partners like the Spar Center and Kaiser and Marin Community Clinics. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. Appreciate the comprehensive update. Good to see you again live. Obviously, the message is clear. Deaths are down from the, the days we all remember. Hospitalizations, yet from what I'm hearing, at least anecdotally in the community, I mean, a lot of people are getting it. And they're showing significant symptoms. In other words, this is not just invariably a mild situation that we can just start looking beyond, but it's knocking folks on their proverbial rear ends when they get it. There's also apparently a course of treatment that they're given automatically. I'm forgetting what that medication is called. Wondering if you can talk about that as well, but just, it sounds like it's stopping short of then having to be hospitalized, but yet it's, it's still serious. But if you can kind of elaborate on that.
Yeah, great question. Paxlovid is the, is the, is the oral medication that is now widely available and is, is definitely one of the, one of the main contributors to the mortality reduction. We are now able to, when anyone is, is diagnosed with COVID-19, especially if they're having symptoms, reach out to their healthcare providers. This is, I think, one of the key messages for all of us as a community is if you are diagnosed with COVID-19, especially if you're above age fifty, or if you have any medical conditions that make you at higher risk for ending up in the hospital, to reach out to your medical provider and that provider can just write a prescription and you can go to a pharmacy, any, any pharmacy in Marin County and go ahead and pick up oral Paxlovid, it's a five-day course. And it very effectively reduces the risk of hospitalization, eighty-nine percent reduction in risk for people who would otherwise end up in the hospital. And then you're right, the, it is not benign. I don't, I don't mean to say that this is behind, you know, over or, you know, but I think the, the reality is that, that this is still remains highly disruptive to us as a, as a society, as a community. Because we're seeing a lot, high rates of infection, people do get sick. You know, it's like a flu. You know, I have more in my own life, I have more people that I know infected now than at any point since the start of the pandemic. And many are saying, you know, I thought this was going to be just like a cold, I feel terrible. So it's definitely worth taking the steps to prevent infection that I outlined here with by covering your face and getting that second booster.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Willis, for your thorough update. Getting back to the Paxlovid, can you talk a little bit about the availability of that for our low-income communities who might not have health insurance? And how, how do they access that drug?
Yeah. So in Marin, we have a, a network of healthcare providers or clinics called federally qualified health centers. Meaning the federal government actually subsidizes them to provide healthcare for people that don't have insurance or, or have limited insurance like Medi-Cal. That's really our safety net system. And that's, we have, you're fortunate to have really excellent healthcare providers, great doctors, great nurses in a variety of different locations across the county, geographically distributed. And throughout the pandemic, that's really been our main asset for making sure that no one's falling through the cracks despite income or, or insurance status. So all of our federally qualified health centers do have access to Paxlovid. So, and most of our low-income residents, we hope at this point, because it's been one of our key messages for years, is to establish a relationship with the healthcare provider in a community clinic. They can get them there. If someone still doesn't have a connection with the community clinic, they can go to our OptumServe testing site, which is located in the canal. And if they test positive, there's Paxlovid actually made available to them for free right then and there. They can walk out of that visit with Paxlovid, walk in, get a diagnosis in fifteen minutes and walk out of there with the medication without any cost.
Right, terrific. And then related to any adverse data from Marin, do we know any more than we knew the last time you were here, related to vaccinations? And, or will we know more in the future? Or when do you expect some of that data to become, become available?
Yeah, we've had about two hundred and fifty thousand of our residents now have, have gotten vaccinated. So we have a lot of, you know, experience collectively of the vaccine. And one of the reasons I think we've had some of the highest vaccination rates is that we all have now as a community, sort of a lived experience of the, it's a positive feedback as far as, you know, people are getting vaccinated, doing well with the vaccine and actually being protected from the vaccine, observing lower hospitalization rates, observing lower death rates as a consequence of high vaccination rates. We do have close relationships with all of our healthcare providers who can reach out to us if there's any adverse reactions. We also have VAERS, it was mentioned by one of the callers earlier. VAERS is a very, is an intentionally oversensitive surveillance system. Anyone for any adverse, whether or not it's connected to the vaccine or not. People who are asked to report into VAERS are not being asked, can you verify that this adverse event was related to the vaccine? All they need to say is someone got a vaccine and then this happened in their life, right? So we don't know causality. The, the benefit of that is that the CDC can then look and see, wow, there's a lot of people, like for example, the myocarditis risk was actually elevated through that system. You know, which had not been actually surfaced in the clinical trials. So it was in the, the real-world experience of making the vaccine available to millions of people that through VAERS were able to actually see that relationship between what seemed like an unusual number of people having, you know, heart pain and intemporal relationships when they got the vaccine. And that's where we were actually able to learn that there is in fact, a very small risk, but real risk associated with myocarditis for the vaccine, especially among young men. That's an example of the effectiveness and the sensitivity of the surveillance systems we have. And those have not found, I mean, the blood clots with, with, with the Janssen was another example. But that's what I lean into because the numbers there are robust enough to really tell rare events when they occur. Because you're looking at millions of vaccine doses compared to what we would see in the county. We're not seeing any evidence of, of adverse reactions in Marin County, but I wouldn't want to sort of see that as sufficient evidence of, of complete safety. I really want to see a more robust database and that's why we look to the, the CDC. The last thing I'll say about that is the, we do track all cause mortality. And it's on our, it's something we've been tracking from the start. And it's on our dashboard. Basically, we're looking at just how many people die in Marin County. We have about two thousand deaths a year in Marin. And, and has that increased or decreased? We have not seen a change. I think it's one of the more, one of the some most remarkable success points for us as a county. There has not been a real change in mortality in Marin County through the pandemic. And that is very unusual. Most counties, you know, across the nation have seen this appreciable increase in just death overall because of the pandemic. Life expectancy in African-Americans across the nation has been foreshortened by about two years because of COVID-19. In Marin County, we don't see any change. So we're not seeing, you know, if we look across, you know, in ten, twenty years from now, people look across at our mortality rates, they're not going to see a signal of COVID-19 because of the vaccine, because of, you know, because of the success of this county in reducing transmission rates and the vaccine, the effectiveness of the vaccine. But correspondingly, we would also see potentially an increase. So I think one of the callers mentioned that they think it may be actually fueling increased mortality with two hundred and fifty thousand, almost all of us being vaccinated, we're not seeing any increase either.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Willis.
Nice to see you, doctor. I've been hearing about a third vaccine. And I'm wondering, could you talk about that for a minute and what you think?
Yeah, yeah. So it's a fourth. We have, we have, we have the Janssen, which is kind of less now, less, we're not recommending. There are some still some areas where they use the Janssen vaccine. There's Moderna Pfizer, which is kind of the dominant ones. And now Novavax is, is the new, is the new one coming on the scene. It is a, it is a protein vaccine, so it's more conventional formulation. It's not an mRNA vaccine. It's, so it's more like the vaccine we use for pertussis or meningitis. What it does is it offers the immune system just a, a piece of the virus. It's not live in any way, it's just a piece of the virus so that it can actually see that and make antibodies against that. So when you're exposed to the actual virus in the future, after you've been vaccinated, you already have antibodies that are able to recognize that because you've been offered sort of a mimic in the form of a protein. We think that's going to be effective for some of our community members who have been resistant to the mRNA vaccine. You know, the, the only people eligible for that vaccine in Marin right now are adults, you know, above age teen who have not been vaccinated. It's not a booster. And so fortunately, I think in Marin, that's a relatively small, you know, relatively small group of, if you also say these are people who would be well, you know, interested in getting vaccinated, who have not yet so far. But it's an important addition to our, you know, to our, to our array of vaccines.
Thank you.
And we'll be, sorry, we'll be having that available in about two to three weeks. We've ordered five hundred doses.
All right, Dr. Willis, two questions for me. One, with regards to schools starting up next month in August, right? Yeah, school startup. Just any, any, you, you interact with the schools and MCOE. So what are sort of the general plans in terms of how they're going to approach COVID going into the new school year?
Yeah, the schools have been, you know, excellent partners all the way along. I think we've been, it's one of the, been sort of the strongest linkages is between public health and Marin County Office of Education. And the schools, kind of getting schools open early and keeping them open. We're going to just continue to that infrastructure. So we have public health liaisons at every school that we're going to stay engaged with as school starts. You know, I think the, the, the real question in my mind is, is BA5. What is BA5? How is the behavior of BA5 going to inform, inform our strategies in schools? I think testing is going to be an important tool for us to keep schools open. We're making sure that they have ample testing available, making sure that, you know, kids in the, if they're symptomatic, they're able to test and stay home if they're infected. The question of masking in schools has not been answered yet. We don't intend to impose a mask mandate in schools. But we also want to make sure that people recognize that masks are protective and as a personal choice. And there will be, you know, we have a, we have a community-wide forum scheduled for August eighth coming into the school year. And we're working with MCOE to make sure the messages are clear for everyone.
Right, Dame, you have a follow-up to that?
Yeah, Dr. Willis, going back to the Yeah, Dr. Willis, going back to the question of how do folks kind of get in line for treatment? We are hearing that it's hard to get treatment through healthcare providers. So do you get, do you recommend going to the, the testing sites or like what's the best way for folks to do that?
Yeah, if, if anyone's having trouble getting treatment from a healthcare provider, first of all, I'd like to know who that healthcare provider is, because I think we're, our goal is to make sure that all of our healthcare providers are, recognize the benefit of treatment and are able to offer it. And I think that was a more common story, you know, two months ago, one month ago. But yes, the LHI site, and it's on our website, if people go to coronavirus.marinhs.org, our coronavirus website, there's a treatment tab and they can find where people can actually go to the LHI site. That's the one I mentioned to Supervisor Redoni, where anyone can just walk in free of charge, positive tests, they can actually get, get treatment offered right then and there. It's in the canal.
And then one last question on monkeypox. So as the, I'm assuming that the vaccine availability will slowly increase, hopefully. In the, in the meantime, how are we approaching sort of distribution of that vaccine? And then secondly, related to monkeypox, for individuals who may not be, have, have a connection to or an association with Spar or whatever, is there, is there, is the county putting up information with regards to monkeypox on our website, or is there a source, a, a place for folks to go for more information if they don't necessarily have an affiliation otherwise?
Yes, absolutely. So we do, we've, we've established a monkeypox website on our, on our county website. And it's dedicated to both clinicians who are looking for information about the latest testing guidance and, and treatment guidance, but also for the public as a whole. California Department of Public Health also has excellent material around just education and information as the situation evolves. Obviously, this is evolving quickly. One of the most important changes over the last week has been the availability of treatment, TPOC treatment. So we're actually working, didn't talk too much about that. We're actually, potentially actually going to be able to start treating cases as early as next week in Marin County. Most of our, if you're not connected to Spar, you know, most of our healthcare providers, like Kaiser is one of our key partners. We distributed sixty doses to Kaiser, and they're actually offering them to their highest-risk patients. We're going to get more doses to Kaiser. So through that distribution network of healthcare providers, most patients should have, most of our residents should have access to the best information through that provider as well as access to vaccines. But for those that don't, I think we would, you know, refer them to the website and welcome them to, you know, tie into, to care in our, one of our federally qualified health centers.
Great, okay. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Could you just slowly say what the county's website is? Because I think it's important that we keep saying that for people.
Yeah, it's marinhs.org. And then there's monkey, the monkeypox page. And I don't know the, the actual URL for the monkeypox page per se, but it's available by a tab on our main website.
Or probably Google Marin County HHS monkeypox. Same with the coronavirus, which, and that website continues to be updated as well with all the coronavirus information. All right. Thank you, Dr. Willis.